See everybody, we wish it would be this filled up every time. As I say many times, the five of us up here are your employees. We work for y'all. And it's always a pleasure to see this many people come out for different reasons, different things, and just to come see how your government works. So God bless you, thank you for being here. I had not done so, but... Okay. Go ask Chris Parent to get the lessons started off with the prayer, then once we get through with the prayer, I'll start, we've got to do the public hearing first. We've got public hearings first, and then we'll get to that section when I call the call of order. Mr. Attorney, if you'll take over at this point.
Thank you, Mayor.
You got ahead of us there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have five public hearings tonight. Most of them have to do with the amendments to the Land Development Code as well as to the HPC Historic Guidelines. What I'd like to do first is let everybody know that the written public hearing procedures and a copy of the Georgia Conflict of Laws are available as a handout and also are posted. And there is... The matters under consideration tonight, I want to go through those first as a group, and we'll take them one at a time. But I want to make sure that everybody knows which, you know, that they are separate items, so you'll know which item you may want to talk about. The first, this is on application, City of Tifton, it's T-14-000001. And these all fall under this specific application. The first item that we'll have a public hearing on is to amend Chapter 4 to add Table 4.01.02G, which is standards for minimum gross floor area, provide for minimum gross floor areas for dwelling units. That'll be the first public hearing. The second one is to add Paragraph 11 to Chapter 4, 4.03.07D, to require underpinning or skirting of pre-owned manufactured homes. That'll be the second public hearing. The third is to amend Chapter 7 of signage of our line, Land Development Code, to add definitions for signage types, amend restrictions of signage type relative to zoning districts, provide for the regulation of electronic display signs, and reduce the reclamation fee to recover unimpounded signs. The last public hearing that we're going to have involving the Land Development Code has to do with the HPC Guidelines is to amend the City of Tifton's Historic District Manual, Chapter 2, Section 4, signage, provide for definitions, the use of banners, stick signs, and A-frame signs, provide for other means of illumination, provide for the regulation of electronic display signs, and for other purposes. The final public hearing will be conducted by Mr. Raymond Drennan of JAG grant application. The first thing that I'm going to ask is that Mr. Bert Crowe from our Environmental Management Department discuss the first amendment to Chapter 4 having to do with standards for minimum gross floor areas. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you. We were asked to, we were asked to come up with a chart that would show a minimum standard gross area. This is a chart that was left out from the Land Development Code when it was developed in 2002, I mean, 2012. And that chart is what will be added to that under 4.01.02G, Standards for Minimum Gross Floor Area Chart.
Proceeds that we're going to be following for the public hearing will be for, the same for all four. The first, I'll ask for people who want to speak in favor of the proposed amendment, and then I'll ask for people who want to speak in opposition. So as to this proposed amendment to Chapter 4, dealing with the standards for minimum gross floor area, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposed amendment to Chapter 4? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this amendment of Chapter 4, Table 4.01.02? Thank you.
The next is Chapter 4, Section 4.03.07D, Paragraph 11.
Mr. Crowe, just one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'd like to close that public hearing on that particular amendment.
Yes, please.
Excuse me. Section 4.0, 4.03.07D, Paragraph 11, to require underpinning for or skirting for mobile homes in the City of Tifton.
Would you want to just explain what that's, what that entails, Mr. Crowe?
Within the current guidelines, state regulations require that any mobile home that's installed within the state must be underpinned within 45 days. However, there's nothing within our guidelines in the LNC that says that it must remain underpinned. What this will do is give us the guidelines for making sure that all mobile homes, whether old or new, remain underpinned at all times.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? And I see no public comment. I would ask that that public hearing be closed as to amending Chapter 4. Well, Mr. Crowe, you talked about amending Chapter 7 of the Land Development Code and what that entails.
Okay. The first one's Chapter 7, Section 7.02, adding definition for electric graphic display signs and stick signs. Do you want me to read those definitions?
Yes.
Electric graphic display sign is a sign or portion thereof that displays electric static images, static graphics, or static pictures, or with or without information or text, defined by a small number of matrix elements using different combinations of light emitting diodes, LEDs, fiber optics, light bulbs, or other illumination devices within the display area where the message change sequence is accomplished immediately or by means of fading, re-pixelation, or dissolving mode. Electronic graphic display signs include computer-programmable, microprocessor-controlled electronics or digital displays. Electronic graphic display signs include projected images or messages with these characteristics into buildings or other objects. All signs whose messages is displayed by light emitting diodes, LEDs, fiber optic, or light bulbs are considered LED, LGB signs, even if they only contain text. And then the definition for stick sign is sometimes referred to as a bandit sign, road sign, political sign, yard sign, or real estate sign, are mounted on a metal frame or wood stake with a facing of non-pervious material.
All right, Mr. Crowe, would you just explain as far as amending the restrictions of signage types relative to zoning districts? As far as amendment to Chapter 7?
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
As I understand it, you are amending Chapter 7 also to provide for regulation of electronic display signs?
Yes. Okay. I don't want to. Sorry. We also wanted to add the use of illuminate, I mean, the use of electronic display signs in the guideline for that. The guidelines would read as follows. Electronic graphic display signs shall be permitted in zoning districts as NC, GB, WLI, and HI, which are all commercial zones. And they would be allowed to be up to, not to exceed 5% of the total allowed signage area per lot. And transition for each display shall occur within three seconds, and the display shall remain fixed for a minimum of seven seconds, and no EDG display shall flash, blink, or strobe. An EDG sign shall be equipped also with an automatic adjusting brightness display for ambient light.
Mr. Crowe, as far as the reclamation fees, is also part of this amendment to Chapter 7, would you explain what that involves?
Yes, sir. We were, after a committee meeting among citizens and as well as set up by council requests, we were asked to look into the cost of a reclamation for a sign that's impounded due to being on the right of way. The recommendation from the committee as well as from staff is to reduce the fee, which is currently $30, to a fee of $5 for reclamation per sign.
And lastly, as far as the regulation of signage, does chapters, does the amendment of Chapter 7 dictate that the regulation of signs in the historic district will be in accordance with the Historic District Guideline Manual?
That is absolutely correct. We have been asked that that be, that is, that will be the guideline for signage within the historic district will be strictly to the guidelines.
Just to kind of summarize what that, the amendment to Chapter 7 is talking about, it's... It's going, we're adding definitions for an electronic graphic display sign, a definition for a stick sign. We're also requiring, as far as the signage in the historic district, any signs for the historic district is going to be dictated by the Historic District Guideline Manual. And the reclamation fee for a sign that is picked up because it's not in compliance is going from $30 to $5. Those are the amendments to Chapter 7 of the Land Development Code. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of those proposed amendments to Chapter 7? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the amendments to Chapter 7 of the Land Development Code?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this saying that you cannot have those kind of signs in a normal commercial area? That scrolling, blinking, flashing?
No. What's that saying is that they're going to be regulated, you know, within the City of Tifton, the electronic graphic display signs, they will be regulated in accordance with what the guidelines are as far as how they can, the size, and how they can, you know, if they can scroll, how long the display has to remain constant. That's what this deals with.
But this is no way, it's saying that you cannot have these signs?
That's correct. It just regulates the size, the time limit in which this display has to be maintained. I think there's, there's also a requirement that it has to be able to dim in accordance with the ambient light. So that way, you know, depending on the light that's outside, the light will automatically dim. Those are the specific requirements that I recall that we are putting in for electronic graphic display signs. You can't have them, but they're going to be regulated with, you know, with certain, you know, requirements.
But can they flash, blink, or scroll?
Well, no. They can't flash, they can't blink, but they can scroll.
If this amendment is passed tonight, is that right?
Correct. What, you know, right now, the question was the flashing and the blinking, and that's why, you know, when we talk to council, there's a certain time limit upon which that face has to remain constant. So we don't get into splitting hairs about what's flashing and blinking and changing.
Well, then I'm going to speak in opposition.
Okay.
My name is John Low. My business is located at 610 West 7th Street here in Tifton. I have two businesses. I actually have one of these signs this is referring to, and it does blink, scroll, and flash. And there are several others in the, in the same area that have that same sign, virtually the same sign that I have. And I have a problem with the city coming in after the fact and regulating signs that are already in existence. I have a deep problem with that. You know, we have businesses here who are trying to stay alive and survive, and these signs add to their ability to stay alive and survive. And the city's coming in and saying, the friendly city is coming in here saying, you cannot have these. Yes, we want businesses, but we're not going to help you very much to stay in business. So I do have a problem with this. And I think you ought to address that issue. Now, I've spoken in opposition to this before. And my understanding was this was going to be addressed to where it would, if these signs would be allowed, and yet you're coming in here now and saying they cannot be allowed and cannot be used. These signs cost a lot of money, like five and six and seven and eight thousand dollars. And they're not something you're going to sit there and just sit there and have. I could put a billboard up in my, or a static piece of vinyl up in my window and do the same thing which you're wanting to do. So I do have a problem with it. And I think you need to address that issue and listen to what people are saying. They may not all be here in opposition to it. But there are a lot of people who are in opposition to this, to the further regulation of businesses in the city and in the state and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. I might be a little confused there. Bert, I thought we were going to regulate the amount of speed that it went up.
It is, yes, sir.
But I thought they were allowed.
Well, the time that it allows that you can change, it's allowed to scroll, and that is allowed. I mean, that's never been an issue. Blinking and flashing was already in our ordinance for all signage, to not allow to blink and to flash. Strobing was the word that was also used, the flashing. What we did is transpose this over, but allowed them to use change of verbiage, or if you want to say, or picture, if you want to say, that away, every three seconds, not to change more than every seven seconds, so in other words, they go up, but then they can change. And they go back up, and they change, and it's, and it's every seven seconds. And that's how we said that and named that.
But John, couldn't you have those and just, and go by those guidelines?
You can, but part of the value of these signs is their ability to flash. You know, I realize safety standards and things, we don't want to cause accidents or anything, but at the same time, this is not, this is not addressing that issue really. That's not the reason they're addressing this issue. The reason they're addressing this issue is to stop people from being displaying things because it irritates some people. Now, that's fine, they have the right, their opinion, but I have the right mind as well.
Yes.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed amendment to Chapter 7? There I see no others who want to speak on that issue. I ask that that public hearing be closed.
Okay.
But we'll now consider the, have a public hearing regarding the amendments to the HPC Historic Preservation Commission Guideline Manual. Mr. Crowe, if you could just review that, please.
We were asked to look at the signage portion of the Historic Guideline Manual, Chapter 2, Section 4, related directly to signage. We were asked to look at definitions portion. So we did look at the definitions portion. We were also asked to look at banners, stick signs, A-frame signs, as well as illumination and indirect lighting possibilities, and to provide regulations for electronic display signs and other purposes within the historic district. After review of everything and after continual debate, both in, within citizenry groups as well as staff review, and through all the different boards that are involved, we came up with a guideline that basically would allow one banner of 24 square feet within the historic district, restricted to the commercial needs zone areas, which is what was presented earlier. Also, two stick signs, three square feet in size, or two A-frame signs for anyone who has 100 feet frontage or less on their lot, three of the same two types, for anyone that has more than 100 square feet. In relation to the different types of indirect, I mean, directly lit type signs, one of the things that was asked by every one of the commissions was to add some more direct information relating to types of signs. So then the definitions, we included a definition for A-frame sign. We included a definition for backlit signs, which is what you commonly see outside of the district, which has center lights inside, shines out through and opaque on both sides. Definition for banner. A definition for channel sign, channel lighting type, which would be more of a spelled-out letter, where only the letters themselves are lit. We also have a definition for electronic graphic display sign, which is basically the same one that we read earlier into the manual as a type of sign. We define neon signs, we define stick signs. All these definitions were added to the definition portion. We also elaborated on the illumination portion, defining what illumination or how the commission would look when the, at illumination when they're looking at the COAs. Any sign that comes in has to have a CLA within the historic district to start with. And listed out a guideline characteristics, it says the nature, the characteristics of the neighborhood should be taken into consideration for the residential, commercial, general, or commercial downtown. Location proximity to the signs, proximity residential, effect on the historical integrity and architecture of the neighborhood, hours of illumination, and sign type, size, and design. And that was the guideline that was set for looking at illuminated signs within the historic district.
Before I ask for public comment on this issue, I'd like to kind of get a show of hands of who's here to speak in favor and who's here to speak against, so they have some idea about the number of folks that may want to speak on the issue. Can I just get a show of hands of the people that would like to speak in favor of these proposed amendments to the HPC Manual Guideline? I see two. All right, and could I see a show of hands who would like to speak in opposition to the proposed guidelines, amendments to the guidelines? All right, I see none. All right, well, let me just ask, do everyone like to speak in favor of the proposed amendments to the guidelines? Come forward and state your name and your address.
My name is Hal Backsley, and we own two buildings in the historic district. Actually, we own three buildings that are in the historic district. Two of those are in the commercial downtown, and one of them is in the RP. It's been a long battle, and hopefully we're very near to, to get it to where businesses can, can survive, as, as John said, and flourish, and attract other ones to our downtown area in, you know, in such a way that it, that it shouldn't bother anybody that's in, in the residential area. So that's, that's what has been worked out, and I hope that the council will, will, will look at it and, and can, you know, go forward with it to where we can get, get on to other issues. This sign issue has been going on for a year and three or four months that I know of, and there's been a lot of money, a lot of, a lot of time, and a lot of effort put in this. And, you know, I think, you know, it needs to be put to bed, and let's, let's go on to something else. Thank you.
I believe somebody else want to speak in favor of the proposed HPC amendments?
My name is Keith Schneider. I also own two businesses in the historic district. It's been well over a year since we started this process. It has in fact impacted my business. I'm sure it's impacted other businesses. I think it's, it's time that we get this behind us. I don't understand for the life of me, I'm disappointed in the people here, I'm disappointed with the historical society that we could not turn around and have a simple meeting of the minds. If we had a conflict on a specific issue, it seems to me we should have addressed and voted on one issue at a time and get it resolved. Instead, we've held this up for well over a year over flashing signs. It's time to end it. I mean, I sympathize with every business owner in here. We have to compete against big box stores. We're attacked daily with unlicensed businesses online, which I'm sure a lot of people in this room and yourselves shop from, which brings absolutely no revenue into this community. And yet, we as business owners, we go every day to work doing our share to generate income to this great town that we live in. I also agree with John back there. We are called the friendly city, and as a business owner, I'm starting to have reservations about being a business friendly. We need to turn around and just put it to bed. Simple. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else like to speak either in favor of or against this proposed revisions to the HPC Guideline Manual? Some of you may have signed up for citizens input, but once this public hearing is closed on this issue, we won't be hearing anything else about this signage issue.
Okay, this one's closed.
Yes.
The next item is the JAG grant application. We're going to speak to that at this point.
Yeah. Raymond?
This will should be a little easier. Raymond Drennan, City Chief of Police Department. Basically, each year for several years, we've been getting a $13,000 grant. It's a grant that we use for overtime, football games, sink, arts and black, you name, whatever we budget for overtime. We have various things throughout the year. We also use it for riding high crime areas whenever we have problems, kind of like what we've been having here lately, I'm sure you all are familiar with. We try to put some guys out there to try to really saturate areas that we're having problems in, and this grant helps pay for stuff like that. And like I said, we've been getting it for several years now, and man, this is a big plus to us, and we really like to continue getting it.
Who's the grant from?
Uh, JAG, I mean, I, what's the, I can't remember what that stands for, to be honest with you.
For the purpose of the public hearing, is anyone that would like to speak in favor of the JAG grant? And is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the JAG grant? Close that public hearing as well.
That's closed as well. All right, we're going to call the meeting order. Once again, it's a pleasure to see everybody here. Always exciting when we get a little bit full. This is good. And we always start with the prayer and the, then the pledge. I haven't found anybody to do the prayer, unless somebody wants to do it, I'll be glad to do it.
I thought you would ask Chris to do it.
He backed off.
Well, I did it last month, so it's, we need to share a love, let everybody have an opportunity.
I'll just do it.
You do it.
It's in January.
Yeah, you do it.
Okay, I'll just do it. Y'all pray with me, please? Dear Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for every day that you blessed us with, dear Father. Thank you for this country that we live in. We live in the freest country in the world, Father, that's been paid for by price. Father, I thank you for the young people that come here today. Thank you for all young people, that's our future, dear Father. Ask that you bless them and lead them in each and everything that they do. And those, the teachers and coaches and superintendents and all those parents that watch over all of our young people and our children as they come up, Father, give them, give them knowledge, give them direction, give them, give them the power to raise up good individuals in this fine country that we have. Our Father, we'd be remiss if we didn't remember that we have soldiers fighting right now this very minute. We sit up here in this free Tifton, Georgia, we have soldiers that are giving their lives, their limbs to this country. Father, we pray for them, and we ask that you bring them home safely. And not only them, Father, but their, their sweet families and their friends and this country that awaits their safe return back home. We thank you for all you do, ask that you be with us during this meeting, and Father, that you get everybody home safely, that's attended. Our Father, we just ask these things in Jesus' sweet and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all stand at base flag, we're the federal leaders.
I declare the leaders of the United States of America, and the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right. We're going to have some fun now. Which one of you is taller than me? You're going to have to leave the room if you're over six foot six, I'm sorry. Can't have the mayor handing out stuff, having to look up at people. I'm just kidding. I met y'all at a church. Where was it, Coach? We were...
Springfield.
Darren Martin Luther King. I sat right behind you, y'all were so well-mannered, y'all all so handsome, and just proud of you. We're all five proud of you, your whole community's proud of you. Now, I couldn't go, I was sick. I had, I had a relapse of flu, and, buddy, I'd have been there if I could have been there. But I'm going to tell you something, I've still got a cocktail table that is quite just right where I was grabbing it when I watched y'all. You know what, I didn't have to grab it too long because y'all got it done. I mean, Dick and I sat there and we said, this, they go win the whole thing. But I had a couple of times there, I got a little bit skittish, but you did a great job. I want to do this a little different. Normally, I walk down and, and give out these proclamations, which is what this is, and I read it. But I want all five of us to be part of that. What I think I'll do, Larry, correct me if I get all messed up here, if five of us stand right here, they get up from there, shake all five right hands, and line up over there, will that be okay?
That'll be fine.
Let's do that, y'all, let's just all go down there.
I think we all do.
Let's all shake that.
And there's no chicken.
We all have chickens. I'm just not asking all of us to act like that. And yeah, Coach, we'll start with you, Sister Coach, y'all come through here and just walk all the way down to the line and crawl that way. We just want to shake your hand.
Congratulations. Awesome. Good job.
He didn't look taller, I'm, I'm aware of this one. All right, I'm going to read this, going to get somewhere where everybody can hear me. Hey, you ain't taller than me. Whereas the Tifton County High School Boys Basketball Team defeated the Wheeler High School Basketball Team on March 8th, 2014, by a score of 63 to 49 to win the... What's that? Six eight? Six eight state basketball championship. Whereas the championship team compiled a season score of 29 to 30. Wow. Give my hand, y'all, that's great. I ain't played drums, but, y'all. I'll come back and play back if you don't remember. Whereas Tifton County High School Boys Basketball Team has won many awards, including Player of the Year, All-Region Selections, All-State Selections, and CBS Max Prep Selections, as well as Coach of the Year Awards, Coach Holland. Thank you, sir. Whereas the Tifton City Council does hereby congratulate the Tifton County High School Boys Basketball Team, the players, the coaches, as well as the boosters, parents, and fans, and hereby recognizes them for their outstanding achievement. Whereas all of Tifton is very proud of you for achieving your goal and bringing the state championship trophy home to our city. Now therefore, I, Jamie Cader, who hereby called upon the citizens of our community to join me in congratulating all of our coaches, players, parents, boosters, and fans for their dedication and hard work in achieving and winning this top honor in the sport of basketball. Once again, thank y'all very much. Coach, I'm going to hand this to you, and I guess we can get the prayer for him, too. Thank you. from Mayor in a few hours. He's not going to say any words. No, I thought it'd be a quick to say what he wanted to say, if he wanted to say it was.
Good evening. Again, we're just happy to be here. Love Miss App water to death. We talked to him today, he's been super supportive of us, all these kids up here, they put in a lot of work. I've been up here for 14 years and been a part of some really good teams, but in order to win the championship, it takes all of you, all of us, it takes everybody, it's a total team effort. And this team been bought into that, didn't have as much talent that we normally have, but it came together as a team. I think the thing that I'm most proud of today is we had three young men sign the basketball scholarship today and that goes to show what hard work we do. We got Rashawn, we call him Cat, he signed today to play at Oregon Tech. We got DJ, he signed today to play at Savannah State. We got LaDarius, y'all doing Babu, he signed to play basketball at University of Russian New Mexico, East of Mexico. Of course, y'all know Tadrick is going to Georgia Tech and hopefully we have Nate sign at Savannah State next week and then we got Quay, who's probably going to sign at South Georgia Tech. So we got six of us in seven seats, I'm not going to leave Steph on out. He already been accepted to that Austin State, he's our smartest kid. So all seven of us sitting there, set to graduate and set to go on to the same part of their life. We tell them all the time, basketball is the beginning, it's not the end, it's just something that helps you get where you're trying to go. We got this thing called 529, so today they signed the 529, that's a college saving plan. When you come up, like most of us came up, our parents would say for us to go to college. So we're really investing our books, we're really investing in basketball. And at the end of the day, when those kids sign that scholarship, that's their 529. So it's a super blessing today. I'm more happy today to see those kids sign a basketball scholarship. I'd be even more happy when they shake their single hand to get the high school diploma than what we want in state championship. Because that state championship will be forgotten at some point, but your high school diploma is an investment, it starts you to the rest of your life. So I'm super proud of this team, I'm super proud of you guys, I see most of you guys in the game. We have the most dedicated family on your loan and we're looking forward to a great year in 2014, 2015. May I appreciate it? Mr. JT, I appreciate it. Wes, I appreciate the email. We humble, we appreciate it and I actually got a chance to see how this thing worked. First city council meeting, good dialogue, we was kind of shocked, we don't know what's going on. Conversation like, what's going on? We don't know what to do, we don't know anybody's side.
Don't feel bad, we don't hate.
We hope we get the sign worked out, sir, we playing, because a year and a half seemed to be a long time to be armed by the sign.
Once again, thank you. Y'all, pretty good, pretty good.
Now, there's a lot more interesting stuff that'll go on now.
Let's go see him. Mayor? They want to get, they want to get a photograph with all of council with the team back down the side. We got one. Well, can we just, council just move it out and they put a couple of folks in the middle.
Y'all have to stand on the... You're going to have to get up here. Mayor, y'all are going to have to get up here, that's too wide, I'm going to see everybody. Y'all have to be in the front, you can't be seen behind the camera. Mayor, you're perfect, I'm just going to be right here, sit with him. Come, come up to the side a little bit, if you can. All right, y'all ready? All right, right here.
Oh, another one? This, like I said, this is... Recently, our, the Lordwood construction students and John Tucker's metal students were delved to complete the project during fourth block area school day. That was at the... Down at the park.
Bullwood Park.
Bullwood Park. And they did just a splendid, splendid job here. I, y'all probably saw in the newspaper or something, this is a picture of it here. And these are our students in our community that do great work like this and we're proud of y'all too. And so we've got a little something for you, it's a certificate of recognition. I will just read this generically and then if y'all will, I'll tell you, Ron, I'll just hand it to them as they come up here, it's already been signed, they will, if you will, when I call your name, y'all come back behind there, come back around, we're going to shake your hand and then line up over here, like basketball guys, we'll get a picture before we let you go from there. I'm going to read it and I'm going to call each person's name and all says the same thing. This certificate is awarded, Tifton County High School Construction and Metal Shop Class is in recognition of your work on the Bullwood Park Playground Equipment Project and various other community service projects throughout Tifton. We as a city council and mayor are providing y'all with a certificate of recognition. And I see y'all do other things, but I know my first year as mayor, it was 2008, boy, y'all were out there working on some habitat. And just, just letting you know, y'all, a gentleman's job. Call up Russell Smith, would you come forward, please? After Russell, Leo, I'm going to mess this up. Papuka? Papo? Papo?
Papuka.
Papuka? Papuka? Would you come up?
Mr. Mayor, we got a good man that couldn't make it today because of work, they had to go to work, so there's going to be several that...
Okay, I'm going to hand those over and Julie will put them in place and we'll give them to you. Yvanta Stevens. David Kraft. Rico Flag. Hey, Rico, you're just... Daniel Fisher. Andrew Albertson. Roger Jones. Zequiel Artista. Did I say that?
Close.
Good enough. Is there any more Stevens out there? Do we miss anybody? Well, I always say the best last. And this is for the folks, you know, these sort of things don't get done unless you have the right leadership and the right guidance, people in the right places. That's why I like our superintendent so well, he puts people in the right places, he manages different departments and things just flow real well. But these two people right here have just done a splendid, splendid job. Roy Willis, would you step up? We got our local...
Jump squeeze that a little bit more. Wes Neil.
Thank you, I appreciate it. No, you have to stay here for 31 minutes, I'm sorry. Appreciate it. That was fun, wasn't it, y'all?
That was nuts.
Oh, okay, now we've got another proclamation. Where is Ron? Who's joining me up front for the...
The Tifton Area Hospitality Association. I mean, the Tifton Area Greenway Association, I'm sorry.
Taga.
Taga.
Well, Tagas, well, we see Dave Hensel, I forgot to recognize Dave. Dave was on the city council for 14 years, is that right? It's always fun to have you back, you see you're the only one here with you. How about that? Maybe all right by him. Got your three with you?
Nope.
All right. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. Whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of fitness and great form of quality family recreation. Whereas the education of cyclists and motors, just the proper and safe operation of bicycles supports to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. Whereas the League of American Bicyclists, Georgia Bikes, Taga Association, the Tifton Area Greenway Association, and independent cyclists throughout our city and state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities. Whereas it has been named Bicycle Friendly Community by the League of American Bicycles. And therefore, I, Jamie Cader, the mayor of the city of Tifton, have the city council to hereby proclaim, May 2014, as bike mark in the city of Tifton, encourage our citizens to participate in promoting public awareness of the benefits of bicycle. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, while I got the microphone, I want to remind everybody here that the Tifton Area Greenways Association, known as Taga, our mission statement is to foster the creation and safe use of quality bicycle and pedestrian networks and greenways for a healthy Tifton area. And so we're all supporting healthy Tifton.
Good. Yeah, I feel a healthy amount of myself. Y'all feel the work we walk with Mayor? You didn't show up, so I quit coming. Every day, a bicycle is fun. I've got about a two thousand hundred bicycles sitting in my house, all of those things are hanging from a ceiling, they're hanging upside down and you have to get the dust off of them every six months. But when my farmer was here, you're going to do it with me now, we actually rode 26 miles one day. Now, that's a lot for these people back there right here. And bicycling is fun and it does, it's a...
Three weeks ago, the local folks hosted the bike line.
Yeah, bike line.
And there are five different routes and the longest one was... And, uh, there are five different routes, and the longest one was a hundred miles. They had a good crowd related.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll be having one shortly in June, Farm to Market, we'll see where the vehicles come from.
Y'all have like a ten foot.
No. We'll pick you up. Thanks.
I'm gonna lose weight coming up and down with this thing, is this planned?
Yes.
You know CPR?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Now, we have the employee of the month, so, uh, this is our Ross Stevens dove out here. Uh, who, who, who's coming up for the employee of the month? Help me out. I'm all by myself. Yeah, I look at it.
Steve.
Steve, yeah, Steve.
Yeah, yeah. Nothing about it. It's a surprise for him.
The boy of the month, in recognition of your outstanding work performance, and for joining above and beyond, the mayor, city council, and city managers recognize Ray Downey Jr. as employee of the year for April twenty-fourteen. Welcome to the month. Here, I'm gonna let my phone be. And I know you want to say your word, you know?
I did.
So, I'll see what's on. See, when you get the pictures in. That's important, I mean. Jessica's kidding.
No, that's okay.
You like to say your word, like this young man?
Well, most of y'all know that work with the city know Ray, and dealt with Ray on a day-to-day basis, sometimes more than myself. Basically, all I have to say about Ray is he keeps me sane. Uh, he puts out fires, which is our day-to-day duties, and I can concentrate on some of the bigger stuff, 'cause I know Ray handles it. I can actually go on a vacation every now and then, because I know Ray has got it while I'm gone. Uh, so, I, I couldn't do it without him. He's just as much as I keep focusing on him.
Good work. Bye again.
I was gonna say, I, I never knew how much it actually takes to run a city. I mean, just not from the IT standpoint, but from all the great people that have to be behind the scenes doing, it's unbelievable, you know, just from where people go to pay their water bill, or what. It's, it's so many great people pulling together, working their own jobs in each little corner, that make Tifton operate smoothly and to do what it does. And I'm just, I'm thankful in number to be a part of a city like this, I really am. And I've learned a whole lot.
Thank you, Ray.
Got a lot more to give you.
I've learned a lot, a lot, 'cause I thought it was the dove. Mary, you might as well... Mary. You might as well just stay down here, 'cause the dove was next. Y'all wanna come on up? Is it, is it up here with you?
Connor. Donna. Connor.
Donna's got it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Connor Jacobson.
Connor, nice to meet you, sir.
And Rachel Hill.
Rachel, nice to meet you, ma'am.
Uh, they are the recipients, uh, this year of the natural gas, uh, scholarships that we award in honor of, uh, Mr. Ernest Doug, James Doug, who got it at our gas department. They, uh, both have been accepted, uh, to the colleges of their choices, and, uh, there were two of several, and we're very proud of them.
Very good, very good. Give him a hand, folks. This is what I was talking about a while ago, uh, the young people that we have coming up. Uh, I'm very proud, I could speak to a lot of schools, I do a bit of that, and so impressed with our young generations coming. Sure, you hear a few things here, you hear a few things there, but by and large, we have got some fine young folks. And, of course, I do try to get out and see them and do it, because one day, I'm gonna be real old and crippled, and y'all gonna have something to do to keep me well or something. I'm telling y'all a good sign. Appreciate y'all, glad y'all won this. You got some check down?
I do.
Okay.
What's that, what's going on with you?
People watching. Rachel, it's from Connor. Thank you, y'all, say.
Thank you guys so much, it helps out a lot.
Oh, the parents.
Your parents like to come up?
The parents come up and take a picture with the, with the suitcase.
That'd be great.
I'm short, so I can stand in front of you.
Okay. Okay.
I'm looking at you. Over here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get on this side.
Yeah.
Can I just stand up here?
Sure.
I'll stand up. I'll stand up.
Thank you all, God bless.
I'm gonna mention very quickly that the city of Tifton attended the, uh, monthly, uh, the annual Natural Gas Authority Convention again this last week, and we again won the heat award for twenty thirteen, which means that Tift County and the city of Tifton had the most donations towards families who cannot afford to pay their heating bill, and we again won that. So, I want to say I'm very, very thankful of Tift County, the citizens of Tifton and Tift County, and we again won this, this award for, uh, for the state in our, in our number of meters that we have in our system.
We have, uh, a lot of dedicated people in this community, we have a lot of people that come forward and, and serve on boards for not one penny, and sometimes a lot of aggravation. But they're willing to do that, they're willing to serve on these boards. Some have served for years and years and years, and we relieve them every now and then and give them a break, because it's just not fair, the same people just stay out there year after year after year, 'cause it is taxing on people. So, we've got a, a, a new person, I want Jim Lieber to step up here with me. Jim has, uh, has gone on the Tifton Housing Authority, and Jim, uh, replaced mighty fine, and we're trying to put her on another board.
We are.
And, uh...
We're working on it.
Yeah. And we're trying to get her on another board, and with your past experience in materials and stuff like that, just being a real good old guy, because you are, you're fitting well. I'm gonna read this, you don't have to raise your hand from the very end, and it'll be swift. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the, the Tifton Housing Authority Board of this city, and that I will support and defend the charter of the city of Tifton as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless providentially hindered. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the city council and the rules of disclosure, I will report thereto. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actually participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia. I shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the city of Tifton. If you raise your right hand, sir, and you do a fart. Yeah, fart. I wanna talk to, to you about this gentleman. Who are you standing by? This is a hero. No, he doesn't like to hear it, but he is a hero. He was in Vietnam, Bubba, you know what I'm talking about, we all know him. But he's a quiet hero, never says anything. A buddy, if you do something wrong with the flag, if you do something like this, the first man's coming at you, this is the last man I want after me. But I wanna thank you, we all wanna thank you, like your job you did when you were in Vietnam and everything that you represent, and then what you've done for America, and we're glad to have you on this board. Okay. I'm going out now, but I'll fix you. Uh, the next item is to the approval of the council agenda that was, uh, set up today, and I'll accept a motion on that.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda presented.
Now, a second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit by, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is your answer, Ron. The next item is a discussion. Excuse me. You got another one to say? Discussion of noise ordinance as it relates to business on Main Street. Uh, this is Big Apple, Mr. Leo Soto.
Mr. Mayor.
He's here.
Uh, Leo came to see me a few weeks ago, and he's wanting to open a business on Main Street, uh, a jazz bar, and, uh, unfortunately, he wants to play musical instruments like trumpets and all those other things that are good along with jazz bar, and I, uh, advised him that that would probably violate our noise ordinance in that particular location. So, he has asked to come and speak to council, and, uh, we've invited him. And, uh, Mr. Leo Soto, if you'll present your case to the council, I'm sure they'll be happy to hear you.
If y'all don't mind, I'm gonna get on a platform so I can hold on myself.
Sure, sure. You don't have a problem sleeping.
Larry, why you standing up there? It's my understanding they, they do have these in Valdosta, and in Albany.
I've heard that.
Okay.
Well, if, um, my name is Leo, I apologize I'm not me, the last council meeting, and I found out one of my close friends at that, eh, one of my members, um, of my, of my mom's side has cancer, so I had to go and had to leave today and be with her. That being said, um, I wanna open a club downtown Tifton, I wanna have live music there, and unfortunately, that, that messes up with noise ordinance. I, um, so I did a little bit of investigation of downtown Tifton, downtown Valdosta, Thomasville, Albany, and Motry, I haven't said that. So, I looked into opening this business, and I choose Tifton, but this is what I am up against. No, eh, eh, no, I'm sorry, this is what, I did a little bit of research. In Albany, there's two co- two commercial properties available to rent downtown, and Motry, there's three, and Tifton, there's four, on Thomasville, there is none, and at Valdosta, there is one. So, uh, so Tifton has a lot of commercial property downtown. Why? Because Tifton has a lot of commercial properties. Business, uh, I, I heard earlier that business groups do not like doing business downtown Tifton, so I'm like, why? Because why is this like this? So, I did, I also did a little bit, a little bit of research, and it says that, um, it just ABAC alone spent two hundred and sixty million dollars in Tifton, and sixty millions of dollars of that was adjusted on, on ABAC's duties. So, the money is here in Tifton. The money is here. Tifton has a lot of potential. But, like, how many, how many restaurants does Tifton have? Like, at downtown Tifton, how many restaurants does Tifton have? Thomasville has twenty-one restaurants in downtown. Valdosta has ten restaurants. Motry has five restaurants. Albany has fourteen restaurants. So, and how many, like I said, how many restaurants are there in downtown Tifton?
Two.
Exactly. Why is this like this? Like, you know, like, okay, three. Okay, there's three. We're, we're in competition with Motry, they have five. So, like, why is this like this? The money is here, there's a lot of potential here in Tifton. And I, I, eh, eh, my parents, they're from Mexico, they came here and they gave me the opportunity to go to college, to work, to have money. Now, I wanna open up a business. I wanna go into the business world, I like it, I love it, I have a passion for it. So, I looked also into the unemployment rate. Jo- eh, in Tifton, it's ten point six percent. I don't know if that has changed or not. In Georgia, it's seven percent. So, we're three percent above, eh, eh, state of Georgia. So, like, um, there is, there is a lot of, there's a lot of rules of what we can't do, what we can do. So, eh, eh, like, I, I see earlier, there was a lot of confrontation versus businesses and, and ordinance, and then I saw, like, like the basketball team, they said it's teamwork, they worked as a team, so that's why they're, have a lot of success. I see, I heard, I heard a lot of teams. Even in your prayer, this is America, we can, we can, we can do, we can change things, that's what America is all about. But, you know, over, over half a century ago, I couldn't even be here. I would be, I would be somewhere picking tomatoes, I don't know, but, but it is, it is what it is. Um, let me do business in Tifton, change the noise ordinance, let's bring downtown Thomasville to life. Even, even though it's, um, like, there is residential property on, on Tifton, but if I have a location where it won't, it won't bother residential area, and it won't, it won't bother any residents, why not? If don't ya wanna have a place like to drink, have a pizza, listen to some jazz music, like, why not? You know, like, I don't see, I don't see no reason to, and all this scares business investors away.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you looking at, um, a jazz club or a restaurant? I, I see a difference.
I wanted to go. I wanted to go. I want you to be able to come in, have a drink, eat a pizza, get some wings, listen to some jazz music, and dance, have a good time.
Have you selected a site yet, or you're just looking?
Yes, I have, I have selected a site. I have selected a site. There are no apartments near, it's ready to rock and roll. I just need y'all's per- permission to go ahead and do it.
Larry, what's the current decimal rating in our ordinance?
Uh, it's, it's not decimal rating, it's, uh, uh, you're not supposed to be able to hear fifty feet outside the business, or not supposed to infringe upon the neighbors, and there's times that are such...
At a certain time limit, like after ten PM or something like that?
Nine, nine PM.
So, you wanna stay a lot later, basically, than at ten?
Yeah, I, I wanna stay open till two o'clock in the morning, because at nine o'clock is when people start to come out, like, you know, and so, so I, I, I can't, I can't, I can't open up a business and have people leaving, I can't close at nine. That's, it does all my money. Like, I'm gonna make money till, till midnight, and, and, and at Valdosta, like, I don't know if y'all have noticed, if, if y'all drive downtown Tifton after, after nine o'clock, it's empty. It's empty. And it drives, it, it drives downtown Valdosta after nine o'clock, you know, everything's open. Even Thomasville, like, Thomasville, they stay open till eleven, like, there's, there's two restaurants because of this noise ordinance. I also did a, a, a little bit of research, like, um, people who get arrested, VUIs, because we stay open, it doesn't change. Like, um, eh, 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 Thomasville doesn't have any VUIs. Albany, eh, eh, it's a little high, because it's, it's all. So, and, 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 and Valdosta, like, eh, eh, Valdosta VUIs and Thomasville VUIs is the same thing. So, like, there is a little risk, I'm not gonna lie, there is a little risk, but it's all part of business. Unemployment rate's high, three percent above the state average level, and, uh, like, we can change that. There's two hundred and sixty million dollars that ABAC just alone is spending. I just want, I'll be happy with the millions.
How many jobs do you think that create?
At, at least ten jobs.
So, you keep mentioning ABAC, you realize ABAC is a two-year institution, where the averages is twenty or below?
Not anymore.
It's not true.
Not anymore, it's changing, there's four-year bachelor's degree.
Majority of students are under age.
Yeah, they are. They are, I, I know, but like I said, like, ABAC is getting bigger, it's not getting smaller.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, yeah. Eh, eh, and, uh, and now they have four-year degrees, they have one New Year Business Economic and Development, which has demand, which, which I believe six hundred people are gonna join the program. So, people want something to do here in Tifton, I guess, they're, like, Waffle House is, is not enough, you see? Yeah, so, and so, either, they're gonna leave Tifton and they're gonna go to Valdosta, they're gonna go to Thomasville, they're gonna go someplace else to go out and have a good time. Now, that's up to y'all, if they wanna stay here, spend money, and create jobs.
Larry, don't we already have businesses in downtown that offer music, that stay up until late?
We have, we, uh, over on Brumby Way, and, uh, Gable Stays Open, they have like a one-man band there, but the, the, they just have to keep the volume down so that it doesn't disturb the neighbors as well. I don't know what location you picked out so far, but the...
Let, let me speak to that location, and I called you about this, and I don't know if you picked out my two buildings or not, I know you're looking at several in town. I haven't talked to you, uh, Dick, he went down and spoke with you. So, I don't know if you settled on the two that I have in here or what.
I have, I have a place where it's not gonna disturb anybody, it's not as much. The tour closes around ten o'clock. If I, if I decide to have... If I, if I decide to have, if bands going in at ten thirty, that's fine because it's, the, 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 the latest closes is till ten P M. It's not, it's not gonna, they don't stay open till ten thirty. I already talked to the director as well. So I, I, eh, what I want is I don't want to invest a lot of money into the place, make it pretty, and then the cops come and show up and like, hey, you know, you can't do this. Go home.
Well, I just want to make it clear that he may want us in my building. I don't know. But that has nothing to do with the way I feel. I, I want to grow downtown. I think it's a super idea. Regardless of where he wants us to go.
Do you?
What do, what would we do, um, to make the change?
One of the things I could do is look into how other cities are handling it. And maybe we can look more into tying it more closely to, you know, residential areas. I, I think if he's downtown in these mile and a half residential area, it may not make a whole lot of sense. So maybe we need to kind of take a look and see whether or not it ought to be tied in more closely to the location, to residential areas. Uh, right now, you've got a general prohibition about annoying and disturbing your neighbors. So that's kind of the, the broad general category. And then you have the idea of where it can't be fifty feet away. That may not make a difference if you're downtown and nobody else is downtown and you're not gonna be disturbing anybody. So I mean, I think we probably should just look at how other municipalities handle it and maybe tie in the noise ordinance more along the lines of, you know, is it going to be, you know, closer residential properties that may more, uh, there's more chance?
What does the noise ordinance say now? I'm just, I'm just curious about it.
Right now, it says you can't. Go ahead, Larry.
Basically, it says you can't disturb your neighbor. That's, that's what it was.
When it gets down to amusement and it, and it's talking about record players and, uh, musical instruments, you cannot have, you cannot, it's, it's a prima facie violation if you can hear it and you're fifty feet away from the building after nine o'clock. So if you, if you're fifty feet away and you can hear the noise after nine o'clock, then they say that's a prima facie case of a violation of the ordinance. Until seven o'clock in the morning.
I think best thing we can do is do a bit of research. I think I just borrowed Leo's research. He's done, already done all of it for us. And I see what the cities that are allowing it downtown. I mean, if you go to Brumby Way, you're gonna hear noise outside the doorway.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's right.
There's a place in Valdosta called Hill Guards that has something similar to what you've got.
Yeah.
And they stay open very late.
Yeah.
And it's live music too. Inside, outside, midday.
Or a theater director, did you tell him?
He's, he's gonna be up there.
You would, you wouldn't mind having something like that downtown make your theater with you?
That would be great. As soon as people finish a show, they can go next door, have a bite to eat, listen to some jazz music, and finish out their evening.
Well, let me do this, Mr. Attorney. I, I think probably if we had to change anything, we had to vote. I probably just won't vote. I probably just excuse myself. Even though you said I don't have to, I want to make sure. If you've chosen my building.
Okay.
Is that right? Well, good.
Okay.
But, uh, if you chose in my building, then I probably just need to excuse myself. And then what matter is the voting thing? Is that what I'm hearing? You can use information and you can sweep the thing.
We'll, we'll look at the ordinance to see if we need to change it.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. How long is this processing take? Because I, I know that, I, I know there's.
I'm sure we distract that from you.
I'm sure we distract you.
That being said, I, I want to start less than once. I have, I have, I have, I have. No. How long, how long is it gonna take? How long, how long is the processing take?
Yeah, Larry, it's, it's, and I would hope y'all would push something like it, you know, I just.
Have you considered any type of sound barrier here?
I have, I have, but it, it, it's not gonna work. There is no way you can put sound barriers in between, in between the walls and, and expect to be quiet. It, it does help, but there is no way a trumpet player can blast through that, a big, like a two thousand watts aerial system. It, it's not. There is no.
Except there's double firewalls to the northeast. I'm worried about that.
I, I think the only issue would be directly east where the facade of the building is facing Main Street.
And that could, that, that could take some noise control in some sort.
What would your hours of operation be?
Um, it would be after ten thirty, after, after ten thirty till two, three, I, I have to stop.
So nothing during the day or anything?
No, but no, nothing during the day, like during the day. Um, I, I, I could open a coffee and like coffee and small sandwiches, but I, I like.
But the music would be that evening?
Yeah, my main attraction would be the music.
Last thing.
We got Santos bar that you can hear over on Collin Street and that's more than.
Yeah, but they ain't done with that kind of music.
Okay, I'm just saying. Noise is noise.
Yeah.
Well, it's not really.
Yeah, yeah, really. Noise is noise. If you could, Santos can blast off and you can hear it on Douglas Street. I'm sure we could deal with this man downtown.
You have questions for me?
That, that noise could be dealt with.
Um, eh, 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 Mayor, what's your property, like the address?
What's that, huh?
The address?
How do you mean?
The address.
The address? Where is it, honey? Three thirty and three thirty-two, Main Street.
You're looking at Gaddy Lou's, aren't you?
No, I was, but there is, but there is someone right next door and I don't want to interrupt with her sleep.
It's on the south side of the, the, yeah.
We, yeah. I think the closest apartments are down towards the southern, southern.
There's an apartment across the street in the, um, building where the credit bureau is.
There's an apartment there? I did not know that.
If there's, if there's an issue that, if there's another, another location available. And so, it's next to the, it's, it's next to World Corporation. And it's pretty far. It's more than, it's more than two hundred feet away from that apartment you're talking about. So there are ways around it. I want to do this. I'm going to do this, either not in Tifton or Valdosta. Because I'm going to do this. I have, in my mind, I'm going to do this. I want to create jobs. I want to become business owner. This is what America is about. So I'm going to do this.
What was that said about the fifty feet?
Fifty feet, like, it can't be, it can't be, um, and let's say from here to here is fifty feet. If, if I can't hear the music, I'm, I'm okay. But if I can hear it from fifty feet, I'm in trouble.
Well, okay.
Okay.
We'll just let y'all get with that, talk about it for the evening. And, um, Leo, thank you. We appreciate your enthusiasm. We want you to settle in Tifton regardless of where you put it.
Yeah.
We want you in Tifton.
I appreciate y'all.
Great downtown.
I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
He would qualify for the enterprise zone, opportunity zone, plus some.
That's the only two we have right now. Enterprise and opportunities.
Yeah, you, you, you qualify for both of that. What about the D D A?
They could go.
Did he go through the D D A as well?
Absolutely.
I'll excuse myself.
You need to have the, I don't know if you put together a business plan.
Yeah, I do. I have it.
Sounds like you got it under control, bro.
Leo, thank you. Appreciate you coming forward.
I appreciate y'all so much. Thank you.
Now we have the city manager update.
I will be brief. Uh, couple things here. First of all, I want to announce that we did receive Mayor and Council a chip grant to, for, uh, uh, down payment assistance program for approximately twenty-one people into, to the tune of three hundred and six thousand. Uh, you may recall that Ray Henderson manages those for us and he has, uh, all but wiped out the last chip grant we have. I think there's probably three or four applications left or loans that can be made from that and he will have maxed it out. He does a super job with that.
Penny, Penny called me about that too. She said we guys, she said she's also gonna help us on the, uh, is that the, uh, toll grant or some kind of toll grant or something like that?
The one we're working on, Twentieth Street.
Yeah, I told you.
Toll and authority grant. That's, uh, that's huge. So any help we can get on that would be awesome. Uh, the L M I projects. You recall we did the L M I grant and that was to repair Central Avenue. That's completed. The research or the paving of Beet Street, uh, down Forty-One South, that's been done. Billy Ray will be tickled to death. It goes right down to his church. So that's done and we will be starting work on Forty-Fourth Street drainage issue that's coming up here shortly. Now that we have some dry weather for a few days. The other one was the homestead exemption for the, uh, sen- the senior citizens discount rate. You recall that we gave the senior citizens a ten thousand dollar increase in their homestead exemption to offset the cost of their, um, uh, garbage pickup. And then that will go, the, the rate will go back in effect at the old rate effective July first, which is fourteen dollars. When's it written, fourteen?
Fifteen fifty.
Fifteen fifty? Fifteen fifty from, was it now six, seven?
Six fifty.
Six fifty. So they go back up. But this, this, uh, increase in the homestead exemption will offset that increase in the garbage pickup cost. Effective July first. And then one other thing that, uh, I know everybody's interested in is retirement. We have a meeting with the retirement committee tomorrow afternoon.
Great.
At five P M.
Great.
Uh, the goal is to have a plan in place for adoption for the F Y fifteen budget. And it'll be up to council to decide whether we go with alternative two or alternative three.
Thank you.
So we hope you'll be. You gonna live, Mayor?
I hope at least another hundred years.
Well, that's the city manager, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron. And I apologize for barking in front of your talking. Then we have an update, uh, on the Tiff Theater. Robert Reed Goodson, if you would please step up to the podium, sir.
Sure.
I want to brag a little bit too about, about our cohort down here on the end. She's playing the Still Magnolias play and I, I've been tied up and haven't been able to come. I'm gonna see her before we, before she gets through with it.
Absolutely.
But, uh, she's, what is that called? A thespian?
She's a thespian, yeah.
See, they, they let me do it back a couple of years ago. I didn't have a big part like she did. I just had a cameo thing where I came on. That's, 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 that's cool. And, and I think we're getting a good crowd, decent crowd to support us.
Absolutely.
But you're doing some good work. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, for those who don't know me, I'm Robert Reed Goodson. I'm the managing director for the Tiff Theater. Um, yes, we do need people downtown and yes, we do need people out and about and celebrating the arts and celebrating the culture in this area. Uh, some, we are owned by the city, as you know. And so just some general updates inside the last thing here about the theater. Uh, our social media, um, has a stronger presence. We now have, for the first time in history, we now have, we are now a dot org. So we're at tifftheater.org and, uh, at the beginning of the new fiscal year, we should be able to also purchase tickets online, which is really great for us. Uh, so we do have a big name. As you come to Evan Kane, uh, and fingers crossed the directors this summer that will be able to, uh, purchase online. Um, a big thing for me is also education outreach because I did, uh, teach high school for three years previous and other things for this position. Um, we still have, we, uh, have three high school interns are working in this and doing a fantastic job. That helped with the second construction for, uh, Still Magnolias. I now have five students, uh, at the high school who are working with me towards their graduation hours. You get three hundred hours, you get a special cord for your graduation. Um, I now have ten people, uh, rotating, uh, for the box office. Um, considering I had no one when I started. Uh, so we now have ten people volunteering to rotate, help sell tickets, uh, for the different events. Um, as far as the advertising and such, I hope that you have been seeing the strong presence in the newspaper, uh, and the, uh, not just locally, but on the national channels like ABC Family, um, country music television, uh, Lifetime and Hallmark. Um, and also seeing Jubilee Commercial, uh, for productions of Still Magnolias. So please keep looking for that. We're trying, I am trying to create a present, not, presence not just here in Tifton, but surroundings. People are, feel warm and inviting to come down to the theater. Um, we will, uh, about four weeks ago, we had five hundred kindergartners and first graders coming to our theater to see a traveling troupe of The Wizard of Oz, which is wonderful that these kids are being exposed, uh, to the theater that can happen here in our presence. Um, we will have a summer camp again this year. Uh, and already, uh, Canada has started for another three weeks. We already have twenty people registered for camp. Um, Still Magnolias opened this past weekend and looking at our previous weekends. It was the strongest opening weekend there's ever been at the Tiff Theater, uh, for theatrical production, which is really exciting. Uh, we still do have performances, uh, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Um, what's really more important is that people are noticing these changes in the theater. And as they're coming in, they're leaving comments. It looks great. We can tell it, it's, uh, so it's stepping up the A game. Excellent show, great work on stage. And the most important thing that I heard, it's nice to see the theater on the way to a comeback, which is really exciting to hear. And, uh, for more information, uh, about the theater, upcoming shows, ways you can get involved, volunteering or be part of the shows or, um, or open mic nights, it's tifftheater with R E dot org. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I did go see Still Magnolias Friday night and it was by far one of the best plays that I have ever seen. So if you all haven't been there, you're really missing something.
Great, great. Super. Good job. Good job. Thank you, Ron. At this time, we have a couple of measures for citizen input. Did anybody sign in, Mr. Ron?
We had Alton Patilla. And of course Leo Soto and Hal Backs, we've already spoken. So Mr. Patilla has signed in.
Okay, Alton, you got, um, what?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Does it start when I get to the podium or? Yes. Good evening, how's everybody? I, I, I will need five minutes. Uh, I, I really got, uh, I think three, three comments that I want to make. One of them is a request. The people who live in, in the D's apartment, um, parking on a, on a red brick Palmer Rex of D's, excuse me, the, the red brick apartment is the new project.
Hill's apartment.
Hill apartment. Anyway, in between D's and Hill, uh, there's an, an extra wide street. Uh, there, I don't know what that street is called. But, uh, it's, it's been a major street, a major thoroughfare and a major playground. In fact, I learned to roller skate, um, in, in that place. Anyway, uh, some of the tenants at the, uh, in, in the projects had asked the housing authority if they could have two speed bumps put in. And I, I, I didn't quite really get, hold on a minute more. But it seemed to me that it, that it shouldn't be such a problem, okay? Uh, because what happens is that because it's a wide street and it's kind of like a done at the end, people tend to come to their, you know, pop wheelies and whatever, whatever, right? And I know that the, that the speed bumps would be, uh, a deterrent to some unsafe driving. Okay, and it seems to me, and, and hopefully the gentleman who's going on the housing authority can, 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 you know, write some assistance. Seems to me we ought to be able to do that, you know, and it should take, how long is the sign thing? I mean, we, you know, we're only talking about like about space from here to the wall, you know, two speed bumps, right? So that's, that's the request, right? The second thing I want to talk about, the complaint, that kind of came up earlier. Uh, the people who live on, on, on Dougan and Collin Street have made several complaints. So they say to the, uh, both the police department and the council. And so they're still complaining. And they were asking that the noise, uh, ordinance be enforced, uh, as regards Santos so that they are not, uh, continuously disturbed from, I think, Thursday, Friday night to, to Sunday or whatever, right? And my third thing is, how am I doing time-wise?
You've got, uh, two and a half minutes left.
Oh, okay, good. This one. My third thing is a comment. Uh, as most of you know or should know, there's been a, um, a lot of incidents of violence primarily among young people and primarily on the south side. And I've, I've heard a, a number of comments and some of you may recall that I have, made some comments, uh, at the council about this a little over a year ago. And what I, what I, what I really want to say, and this is my comment. There's a rap song that says, "Looking for love in all the wrong places." And the idiom is important here because I think that part of the problem with solving this violence issue is that we're looking for the answers in all the wrong places. Okay, because it is my, my position, my, my, uh, position, I guess you could say, and my feeling that until the community comes together and attacks and approaches this from a, from a total standpoint, it's not gonna work. You can't police it away, okay? You can't pray it away, okay? You can't educate it away. But I think between the police, the churches and the educational system and the community, we have to find a way to, uh, arrest this violence. Okay, and this antisocial, uh, behavior that's happening. Personally. Personally, I think that most of this dialogue should take place on the south side, but because it does impact upon city, uh, policy, and in particular the police, I think it's important that it be brought out. And as I said, and I'm, I'm not anti-police, but we're not going to, we're not going to police it away. First of all, you can't afford it, okay? You can't maintain an armed, all right? Uh, and you, and you have to have some effective policing strategies, and I, and I'll say this to the assistant chief, having a anti-crimes patrol that, that functions up until dark, that's not going to get it either, okay? Because that's not when they're out there. And on that note, I'll say goodnight, thank you.
Thank you.
You still got 30 more seconds, huh?
That's okay, I'll, I'll yield my 30 seconds to the, to the next one, man.
That was some good points, well done, thank you. Okay, we have, uh, approval of the minutes, uh, 4/7/14, the joint call, Tifton-Tiff County meeting, the 4/7/24, regular council meeting, the 4/24/14 workshop and call meeting. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, uh, sit if you're raising your right hand, say aye. Uh, that's unanimous, Mr. Ron. We have a consent agenda, and there's only one on there, so I won't ask the normal question that I do. Uh, so resolution providing for alcoholic beverage license for L. Moreno Mexican Restaurant located 728 East Fifth Street. Mr. Ron, do you want to speak to that? I know we spoke about it at the workshop.
Yes, sir, staff has recommended approval with this, this is a, a new, new business owners, uh, formerly, um, to care of El Sol, and they have no criminal background at all.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, I have a number two, so.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you're raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. I have a resolution, resolution providing for the contract between Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia and the City of Tifton to continue to secure, purchase and supply natural gas to the city's natural gas system. Mr. Eric Groome, is Eric, well, that's, I kind of see you sitting back there.
Mayor, you may recall that, uh, in a previous workshop, we talked about the, the bond issue from MK, Eric's here to explain the details, has been doing it since 1991, he's doing a blind folder.
Yeah, he always does a quick.
Hey, Mayor, I'm going to stick to that five-minute rule if I can.
All right. Although if you're from 50 miles away, it's only three minutes. This is.
I, I will say this, I've never felt so insignificant today, uh, in this meeting with all that's been going on. I, I played high school and college basketball, and I would have killed to be on that team right there.
Oh, great, thank you.
I played 4A, so I can only appreciate what 6A does, and, and the community should be really proud of that, because I lived and breathed it for many years, and I would have killed to be on a championship team. We never got out of districts, I went to school in Florida, but we, we never got out of districts, so I can just only believe, and I didn't see any 610 back there, so I can tell you how loud that is when you go up against 6A.
What do you mean, one's taller than me, and we appreciate it.
I, I would be remiss driving home if I didn't mention that, I was, I was proud, and I'm not even from Tifton, so.
Thank you.
And even better news, I consolidated this folder into that one-page handout, I did sheet and put it on the front and the back. But I did want to, as I spent some time today, kind of thinking how I wanted to just briefly mention this, um, like Larry mentioned, that we've been doing this since 1991, and if I can just put it in a nutshell, real quick, the page with the numbers, um, that is what we're talking about here today, is continuing that portfolio return. Um, what our communities basically do is they come together, the 79 cities, and, uh, we issue revenue bonds to go out and buy long-term gas supply, either wells or prepaid deals, and that's significant for our business, for what we do, and again, there's a lot of people behind me that, that does this, and the reason we were created by the state to do this for the communities in Georgia, um, and Florida and Alabama, but that, that piece there of 110,000 is what the City of Tifton got back this year, return check that just came maybe two weeks ago, and that's what we're thinking of continuing for many years to come. We're running up against a deadline with our, we've done a portfolio one, which was 1991, two and three, and we're running up against the time limits on portfolio three, so we want to start a new one, do portfolio four with all 79 cities, and continue this, uh, this return for the cities, uh, and their gas system. And, uh, um, that, uh, best thing I could have done is just done, and, and again, our attorneys worked this up, a simple Q and A, so, uh, if, if you do have time, I, I won't read them tonight, but it is a very, uh, uh, descriptive Q and A of why we're doing it, what are the time limits, why we're up against. And, uh, I, I, again, I just want to remind the, the council, um, that the gas authority is a volunteer organization, you, you choose to be a member, so we have to, we have to provide benefit for the City of Tifton, and we have five-year outs, so if a city is unhappy with the organization, you can get out every five years. We hope that never happens, Tifton's a law, lifetime charter member, uh, we were created in 87 by the state of Georgia, uh, to do this, so we want to continue it for many, many years to come. Be happy to answer any questions. There is two pieces that, that this, that the gas authority was really formed to, get your gas to your gate so Roger can take it to your customers, that's, that was ultimate number one for our General Assembly when they set us up. Number two was to provide benefit. If we're already buying the gas, we might as well go out and pull our resources and buy as much as we can and save as much as we can, and that's what this piece is, is allowing us to do. It is a lot of, it is a lot of money, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's, again, you're, you're combining 79 cities to buy gas for long-term. So, uh, good thing about it, it's not on your balance sheet, it's on our balance sheet, and you have outs to get out if you don't want to stay in the organization, uh, the way we, uh, the reason it's so formal is obviously we are, we are, you're putting your good faith of your citizens, of your gas customers, uh, that they will continue to buy gas and continue to pay the bills. That's most, most critical, so. Don't think I have anything else, um, uh, to, to say, uh, other than we are very appreciative of the City of Tifton. I really learned gas from Roger's predecessor, Jason, I learned a lot, and from Roger even today, I learned something new about natural gas every day, been in it for a while, but, uh, I really learned, uh, here with Ms. Dolores and, and, and Jason a long time ago.
That's great, Eric, thank you for your kind words, appreciate you.
I'll be happy to answer any questions, if your attorney has any questions, or if the council has any questions.
I'm good. You have a slate, Chris, bye.
Thank you.
Or wherever you're headed, thanks.
I'm headed south.
All right. Thank you, Eric, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have as our ordinances, the, uh, we, uh, oh, we do have to. Without doubt. Well, that is a resolution, yeah, if that, okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve that resolution.
Second.
Your second?
I do.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you're raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous, that's right. Thank you, I appreciate it. Next ordinance is the amendment chapter four, the, you want to take these over? These is what we just, uh, talked about.
This is what the hearing was on there.
That's right, that's what we just talked about, so, uh, we're ready for the, uh, question on the, on item number four, that runs out, Kansas Lookout, it grows four areas for dwelling units, that's correct.
I make the motion that we approve that ordinance to amend the, uh, gross floor area.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you're raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Item number five, the ordinance amendment chapter seven, code of awards and rights signage, do I have a motion?
Can I make a motion to accept item number five? Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you're raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. We have an ordinance, amend the historical preservation design guidelines in chapter two, section four, regarding signage, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve item number six. To approve item number six?
Uh, item number six. I'm not certain.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you're raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, be opposed? No? That was unanimous, okay. Uh, item number seven, the first reading of an ordinance to amend the charter of the City of Tifton by meaning chapter one, section one dash 11, small a, of the code of awards reducing the maximum term of imprisonment of ordinance violations to provide for an efficient, effective date and for other purposes. And, and let me say this to you, and I know all the council knows this, on these two items, we have to have two readings, that's the state laws, I correct?
Mayor, it, it does, as far as the charter amendment, you have to have two readings, but I see no reason why it doesn't make any difference for the ordinance, but I did want to make one correction.
Okay. Is this on number seven, the one?
It is on number seven.
Okay.
The section that will be amended for the charter is part one, article four, section 4.13. Uh, that's, that's, um, the reference that's there, chapter one, section 1.11a, that's to the code of ordinances, which is what we'll deal with, with number eight. So basically, number seven, that reference to the charter, again, is part one, article four, section 4.13, is the section of the charter that will be amended, and I'll make that change to the, to the.
Okay, and that would be, uh, so changed for the, uh, for the, uh, motion.
Ron, just for clarification, could you, a later email, maybe a PDF copy to the council of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Jake, Jake, I'm also, like, I don't have any three.
Okay, good, yeah, be careful. Okay, I'll, uh, accept a motion on item number seven.
I make a motion to accept number seven. Second.
I got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you're raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, may the record reflect, okay. Uh, item number eight, first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter one, section one dash 11a, that's correct, of the code of ordinances to reduce the maximum term of imprisonment of ordinance violations to provide for an effective date and for other purposes. I took a motion for that. I got a motion.
Second.
I got a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you're raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. There is no, uh, dictation, is that right? Um, and we have table.
Mayor, could I just, could I just say something, and we'll, and we'll be gone? I just want to give y'all a hand, all of us want to give you a hand, for all of the things that y'all have done, you have done a great thing tonight for the City of Tifton, and there are things more to come that y'all, that y'all can do for the city and the businesses, so I have to.
The city employees did clap for it, but that's, that was well noted, I too, man.
We're not, we don't need, Ron, we don't need to officially table number nine, do we?
No, she's.
I like a little bit of direction, uh, whether you want me to contact these folks, whether you want to contact them yourself, you know?